Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the June 14th meeting of the Haltum City Council. This meeting is called to order at this time. And I want to begin by welcoming all of you who are here in council chambers. And I want to welcome those who are watching the live broadcast of this council meeting, as well as those who are going to be watching the delayed broadcasts over the next couple of weeks. We always appreciate our citizens' interest in their government, and again, welcome. I'd like to ask you to join me at this time. If you will, please stand for an invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance led by Mayor Protem Jim Sutton.
Let's bow our heads. Father, thank you so much for this country that we live in. I thank you for the Supreme Court that made a decision that we can acknowledge you in public, Father, just yesterday, and I thank you for that decision, Lord. I thank you for the state that we live in, Texas, where there's been many struggles to secure our liberty, to secure our freedom. I thank you for those people that did that. Father, I thank you for this city we live in. We're blessed to live here. I thank you for your love, and your compassion, and your concern for the people of this city. I pray that we learn how to model that, each one of us, Father. I thank you for the volunteers, the churches, the leaders, all the different people that make up this community. I pray your blessing upon them. Bless the work of their hands, Lord. I also thank you, Father, for those that serve among us in other capacities, the government leaders, national leaders, those soldiers that are working over in Iraq. On our behalf, I pray your blessing upon them, your favor upon them, Jesus. And we just pray all this in your name, Jesus. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We want to begin tonight by recognizing a couple of young ladies in our audience. They're here on a mission. They have a special purpose, and they had talked with Councilmember Diane Bransom earlier. And Councilmember Bransom, you want to introduce those young ladies and tell us what they're doing here?
Thank you, Mayor. And please bear with me while I say, Thaina Booth, will you help me say your last name?
I'm Elizabeth.
And Sophie Lee. And they're here from the Tarrant County College Northeast Campus, Texas Government Department, and they're here to ask a lot of questions, and watch what we're doing, and then they're going to write a report that I hope they'll let us see after they're through with it. But thank you for taking time out of your evening to come watch local government in action.
And Mr. Muir, I believe, is our city manager. You have a special guest to introduce.
Marilyn Ackman, our Encore rep. Won't you come on up? We had a little storm last week, or a couple of weeks ago.
I'll bet everyone knows about that storm.
I asked Marilyn to come and just kind of give a briefing from the TXU side. I know you guys worked awful hard, and are still working hard on that. Just wanted to appreciate the efforts that you and your company have done, but just give you a few minutes here.
Thank you. For those of you who don't know me, I'm Marilyn Ackman. I'm an area manager for TXU Electric Delivery Company. We used to be Encore, but the Encore name has gone away. Our new name is TXU Electric Delivery, but we do the same thing, and that's to maintain the wires and poles and keep electricity going to your house. And during the storm a couple of weeks ago, that was quite a task. The storm was one of the most widespread, and produced some of the most widespread outages we've ever seen in our 100-year history. I'd like to thank the citizens of Haltum City, and especially the staff, for their patience in working with us, and understanding that it takes us a while to get the power back when the outages are this widespread. We had help from other electric companies and tree trimming crews from nine different states. And at the peak of our efforts, we had over 3,700 people working to restore power. All areas of the Metroplex were hit, but most of the damage was in the outages were in Tarrant County. So once the power was restored to most of the other areas, we concentrated all of our crews on the Tarrant County area. And that continued even into a week after the storm on June the 1st. So if your power was out for more than a few hours, or a few days, I apologize, and I appreciate your patience. Hopefully, this has given us the opportunity to look at the way we handle a storm of this magnitude, and hopefully, we'll learn from it, and we'll come up with better ways to handle it. And hopefully, we won't have to deal with a storm of this magnitude very often. But thank you very much.
Amen. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ackman. Tom, you have a couple of other items, I think.
Thank you. In relation to the storm, as many of you know, I've contracted with ISI to assist with the, or to assist, perform it, to perform the brush pickup. It started that last Monday, and because of the rains that we had last Monday, it's gone slow. They've only picked up about 600 yards of brush, working from the northern and the most southern parts of the city, working towards the middle. I don't, I've got some issues with that. Starting tomorrow, they're going to be starting from the middle and working out. I think some of the harder-hit areas are in the middle of town. So they're going to be starting that. They're also going to be starting this weekend, bringing in more trucks, and working over the weekend, trying to pick up this brush and getting it off our properties, off your property. So we're anticipating about another week and a half, maybe, till we get it all done, but we're still working in that endeavor. The other thing I wanted to let you all know about is, on May 28th, at the COGS annual banquet, the city received an award, along with eight other cities, excuse me, seven other cities. Haltum City participates in NETS, the Northeast Transportation Service. That's made up of the cities of Colleyville, Keller, Hurst, Ulyss, Bedford, North Richardson Hills, Grapevine. And the COGS recognized us for our spirit of cooperation amongst the other cities, trying to cooperate with other entities to perform a common good, a common public service for the public, and they've recognized that. And we're awful proud of that. That's, the NETS service has kind of gone through an overhaul. I think it's turned to a better direction, and it's a growing concern that serves our seniors and our disabled. That's all I've got, sir.
Okay. And thank you, Mr. Muir. I believe Betty Porter with the Beautification Board, you have a presentation to make at
Good evening, council, mayor, staff, and citizens of Haltum City. My name is Betty Porter, and I'm currently chairman of the Beautification Board. And this year, we're celebrating 20 years, and I would like to read some of the history of our beautification board. The first meeting of the Haltum City Beautification Board was held June 7th, 1984. Jack Lewis, the Haltum City mayor at the time, attended the meeting, along with Wanda Strong, city council member. Board members included Pauline Wright, Joanne Shelton, Becky Mohan, Doris Korenik, and Barbara Duke. Other founding members who could not attend the first meeting were Janet Snow, Virginia Weaver, and Sid Stubbs. Al Yudi and Betty Hurley were among the first members of the fledgling board. During the first few meetings, board members discussed possible programs to improve the community, such as an adopt-a-spot program, securing Christmas tree, securing, I'm sorry, securing a neighborhood Christmas tree to be our, to host our annual tree lighting, working with the State Transportation and the Department of Plant and Wildflowers, along with state roads in Haltum City, initiating a yard-of-the-month award, cleaning up the cemetery at Northeast and 28th Street, Northeast 28th and Beach. And did you know that the Beautification Board sponsored the contest that resulted in the city's current proud and progressive slogan? Geneva Kinman won the slogan contest and was presented a $285 prize. In 1985, the board sent representatives for the first time to the Keep Texas Beautiful Workshop in San Antonio. That meeting inspired the board to utilize the Governor's Community Achievement Award application as a guideline for improving the community, and for winning the prestigious Governor's Award, which carried with it a $60,000 landscape prize. The board began promoting Free Landfill Days, as well as beautification and awareness efforts. They worked with the city's garbage contractor to provide free bulk pickup of trash, and initiated the Business of the Month program to recognize businesses that set an example for cleanliness. They also turned their attention to code enforcement issues, seeking help from staff to contact property owners who would not clean up. It was the work of a former board member and later council member that resulted in the addition of an employee to deal exclusively with code enforcement issues. Board programs were included in the city budget for physical year 1986 and '87 for the first time. The board began promoting litter prevention curriculum for elementary students, and initiated a clean campus program to encourage students to keep their campus clean while participating in environmental activities. Did you know that the official tree of Haltum City is the crepe myrtle? And did you know that the official Haltum City Arbor Day is the second Saturday of March? In 1988, the board entered the Governor's Award competition for the first time. The next year, they entered again, and we won. The landscape award was used to improve the medians and right-aways on Denton Highway near the Northeast Chamber office. With the addition of a part-time coordinator, and becoming Keep America Beautiful certified, the board continued to add programs, develop partnerships, work closely with city departments, and generally improve Haltum City. The group won a National First Place Award from Keep America Beautiful in 1991, and continued to roll on to a second Governor's Award in 1998. That award was worth $214,000. And a third Governor's Award we won this year, we will gain $95,000. Through the years, board members have been willing to do whatever it takes to improve Haltum City, from digging in the dirt to networking with representatives from local communities, as well as the state and the nation. Volunteer members in 1991 pitched in to install the landscaping in the front yard of the city hall. In the mid-'90s, we worked with TechDOT on a cost-sharing program to landscape Denton Highway north of 820. Last year, we planted a hedge row along the Northeast 28th Street to improve the New Trinity Cemetery. Two years ago, we installed a welcome sign at 121 and Haltum Road. We worked for the past four years with the state on a STEP landscape grant for East Bell Net. 10 years ago, we set up a tree farm, and today are about to install another landscape improvement on Broadway and Denton Highway, right in front of Walgreens, that triangle right there. With the continued support of city council and city management, board members vow to continue their proud and progressive ways. Today, our members include C.C. Oaks, Denise Ford, Wayne Clowers, Diane McGee, Mary Spencer, Birdie Blocker, and myself. Our staff liaison is Fran Burns. 20 years is a long time, but lately, we've been thinking of taking on a new motto. With all the challenges the board and the city continue to face, our new motto will be, "Never give up, never give up, never give up." And now, I have some of my members that are going to help me pass out a little prize for you guys. This is our 20th anniversary. We would like to celebrate it by giving you one of these t-shirts. Girls, if you will come on up. And please, everybody, when you leave, we have some cupcakes out in the foyer to celebrate our 20th year. Also, in your bag, sorry. In your bag, you're going to receive a rain gauge, a bumper sticker, and this is a vest. If none of you have ever seen this, you've received one of these. You can call your appointed person and find out when our next workday is. And you, we pick up trash on Denton Highway quarterly, so you are all invited to that. Thank you for your support over the years, and we appreciate your help, and we're looking forward to another great year. So thanks a lot.
We appreciate the work the Beautification Board does, and the way they help enhance the beauty of our city, all of the efforts, not only by this board, but by a lot of other volunteers as well. Before we go on to the consent agenda, I failed to ask earlier in the meeting, if anyone has any of the yellow or orange cards to fill out, to speak to the council, if you would, bring those up and hand those, if you would, to Councilmember Sutton or Councilmember Bransom on this end, and they'll pass those to the city secretary. Okay, we're ready now to move to the consent agenda, and that consists of items number 1 through 6. These items are considered to be self-explanatory, and they will be enacted by the council with one motion. We have had item number 4 pulled off of the consent agenda, and we'll take action on that item separately in just a moment. What this is, because it is rather routine matters in these areas, approval by the city council authorizes a city manager to implement each one of these in accordance with the staff or board recommendations. So I'm ready at this time to receive a motion on the consent agenda, items 1 through 6, with the exclusion of item number 4. Councilmember Bransom?
Thank you, Mayor. I move we approve the consent agenda, 1, 2, 3, 5, and 6.
Okay. Councilmember Hutchison?
I second that motion.
Have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. If you will, register your vote. And that carries by unanimous vote. Item number 4, Councilmember Lanford asks that this be pulled off for individual discussion and action. And with that, I will go at this time to Councilmember Lanford. Give us your thoughts on why you wanted this pulled off, and where you think we're headed with this.
Thank you, Mayor White. No special reason to bring it off the consent agenda, other than the fact that it's, since it's a policy issue, and could have some important impact on the city, I thought it would be better just to have that separate, and have us discuss that before we move on that.
Okay. Thank you, Councilmember Lanford. To the city manager, a comment you'd like to make to introduce to our audience particularly what this tax abatement policy consists of?
I'll let our economic development consultant, Kent Flynn, deal with it. Thank you. Mayor, councilmembers, give you a brief overview of why we're doing this tonight. Our tax abatement policy has a provision that it is only good for two years. So every two years, it has to be renewed. And actually, what happened was, that policy expired prior to the recall. We tried to get it on the last agenda, but we didn't have quorum, so it's time now to consider renewing that policy. We are bringing it to you tonight. Basically, we're bringing to you the policy that we've had in place for several years now, with two minor revisions. So there's two things we're asking you to do tonight with regard to this policy. First and most important is to adopt an abatement policy, so that we're not without the ability to give tax abatements, and so that we will have your guidance with regard to the policy that we want to employ. If we don't have a policy and don't have abatements, then we're going to be at a competitive disadvantage to the cities that we compete with for economic development. The second reason, the second most important thing that we want to do tonight, is discuss these revisions that we proposed. There's two revisions. One is a minor housekeeping matter, in order to bring the definition section, one particular definition, it's kind of a complicated phrase, called the economic life of an abatement. To bring that into compliance with the rest of the policy, and that, the remainder of the policy that we're trying to get it to comply with, is the fact that this council has the ability to give variances by way of 2/3 majority vote to the uses that are allowed or permitted to give abatements to. In other words, in the policy, there's eligible uses that are eligible for tax abatement. And that is one of the provisions of the policy that is subject to variance. In other words, if you want to give a variance to another use that's not in that list of uses, you can. The economic life provision is just a definition that we were trying to acknowledge in the definition, because all of these policies and ordinances have a section at the very beginning explaining the definitions of the terms. The term for economic life didn't seem to include the possibility of a variance, whereas in the rest of the body of the ordinance, you do have the right to give a variance and include uses other than those that were listed. I can get into the details of that provision in a moment if there's questions, but the real reason that we're trying to propose change to the existing policy is to include regional retail as a permitted facility that's eligible for abatement. In our previous policy, when it was revised in one of these annual or two-year, biannual renewals, a previous city manager felt like it was, I guess his feeling at the time was that we should not give abatements for retail. So he took that use out of our list of permitted uses. At the time, oh, probably half the cities that we compete with did allow regional retail to receive abatements, and the other half did not. The market has become so competitive for retail since then, that it's my recommendation that we put that use back in as a permitted use. So we've done that. We've listed that in, among the permitted uses. I would like you to note, though, even in the previous policy, when we had that use removed, this council had the, or any council, had the ability to grant a variance and add retail as a permitted use for an abatement. They just had to do so by 2/3's vote. And what I'm suggesting tonight is that we go ahead and just put it back in the list, and not require 2/3's vote, because I think it sends the wrong signal to prospective retailers. Regional retail is not just your ordinary small retail. It is defined in the policy to derive its income primarily from folks outside of Haltum City. So it would be a major retailer that we're talking about there. And the reality today is that the anchors that anchor these shopping centers are all demanding some kind of incentives. If you look around, Cabela's in Fort Worth that you may have read about, up there by the Raceway near the Alliance Corridor, the city of Fort Worth created a $40 million TIF just to attract that one retailer, because they felt like it would generate additional retail and other uses along with it. Mansfield recently gave a $12 million abatement for a shopping center that is proposed in their city. Fort Worth, just to give you kind of a little different slant on it, in order to encourage redevelopment in some of their redeveloping areas, has proposed $19 million of abatement for a Super Target on 7th Street in the old Montgomery Ward's building, to redevelop that facility. So they're becoming more and more common, and in order to compete and try to attract the major users that we'd like to do, we would like to see that use added back in. So I'd be available for any questions or follow-up.
Any questions for our economic development consultant? Councilmember Lanford?
Kent, correct me if I'm wrong, a regional retail facility would be likely to bring in sales tax revenue to the city?
Yes, it would substantially help us, because retailers, shopping centers have to be anchored by large anchors, and those users typically, their target market is regional. So it would generate sales tax.
Thank you.
Further questions for Mr. Flynn? Thank you, Mr. Flynn. Before the council begins its discussion, and we entertain a motion regarding this item, we have a citizen who's filled out the request to appear before the council on this item, Mr. Ray Eklund. If you would, come forward, give us your name and address for the record, and you have five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name is Ray Eklund. I live at 2532 Oakwood Terrace. First off, I want to thank you, Councilman Lanford, for bringing this off the consent agenda. I think these kinds of items are very important to, A, discuss, even if they're routine. We'll recall about six or eight months ago, the senior tax freeze was on the consent agenda, so they wouldn't even be discussed, and that's a big item as well. The tax abatement policy could, in fact, be a very large item, and I appreciate you having the courtesy to take that off for us. I didn't have much time to spend with it this afternoon, but I noticed on page 3, item F, properties that would be exempted, that would not be allowed to have tax abatements, and one of which I was concerned about was residential. Now, Mr. Flynn just mentioned the Montgomery Ward's property over there, and I've seen some of the sketches on that, and they may have in fact given it for the Super Target that's going to be part of that property, but a major part of that redevelopment over there is residential. They won't make it into apartments or condos or some such thing. And I believe that our residents in our community, in our neighborhoods, deserve the same consideration that a business might get. Now, I understand that businesses are easy to govern, that they may produce more tax revenue, they may actually produce a job, some jobs, and we all appreciate that. But I think if we could think about ways that we can work on our neighborhoods, that tax abatements may in fact be a way to help redevelopment in some of our neighborhoods that need to be brought back up. I don't know whether the city will consider that as a policy for new neighborhoods that are going in, but certainly, in these older neighborhoods, all the help we can give them to maybe bring some of those properties back. And we've discussed this, I've discussed this before the council several years ago on one particular property, about ways that we can come back in to one little spot and help bring up that neighborhood, or maybe two or three. So I would like for the council to consider that, and maybe Mr. Flynn would like to address the residential aspect of the tax abatement policy. Thank you very much.
If you will, wait at the speakers. Stand, members of the council, any questions for Mr. Eklund regarding this? Okay, there being none, thank you, Mr. Eklund. Okay, we're ready now for the council action regarding this. I'm ready to entertain a motion regarding the tax abatement policy. Councilmember Lanford?
Thank you, Mayor White. I too would like to hear from Mr. Flynn about the inventory, I mean, the residential property issues, and just ask about redevelopment. Is there anything, by keeping residential property in this, does that stifle redevelopment or keep us from redevelopment in any way?
Well, what the policy does is not include that as a permitted use. However, just as I said a moment ago, the council has the ability by 2/3's vote to give abatements for any use it desires. I might yield to Wayne, I don't know. Do you know if there's any prohibition against residential receiving abatements?
I do not recall whether Chapter 312 specifically prohibits an abatement on residential property. I did not look that up, because this was on the consent agenda, and if that's something the council wants to consider tonight, then I would suggest that we postpone this till the next meeting, and I'll be glad to research that.
Again, keep in mind that if you did want to include residential at any given time on a case-by-case basis, and it was legal by way of the state law, that you could do so by 2/3's vote. I'm not familiar with abatements being used widely for residential purposes. I'm only familiar with that kind of incentive in conjunction with historic redevelopment, historic preservation, that kind of thing. Typically, abatements have been used for basic industries, that is, to create primary jobs. And... And I guess it's only been of late that retail has even been added, because there's been a lot, I guess the city manager that I'm talking about was two or three city managers ago, and he was trying to resist pressure or try not to put the city in a position of being under pressure by leaving retail out, is what he was trying to do at that time. But now I think it's unavoidable. You really need to send the signal that we need retail.
Thank you.
Councilmember Sutton?
Thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to make a comment and a question. Seems like what we're doing is we're trying to restore a policy that is now lapsed with this agenda item number four, tax abatement policy, tonight. And it sounds like we have other issues with the residential, but it may be best to proceed with approving this policy tonight and then figure out if we want to address the residential aspects of this policy at a later time, so that we do have a policy in place at this time. So if that's the case, I'd like to make a motion that we go ahead and approve Agenda Item Number Four as is, with the understanding that we will address this at a later time in regards to the residential aspects, if that's okay with my fellow councilman, Member Lanford.
Councilmember Holcomb, I believe your light was on first.
I was just going to second that, if there was no further discussion.
Okay, Councilmember Lanford.
Just for a second also.
Okay, everybody clear on the motion, the contents of the motion? Okay, any discussion on the motion? Okay, there being none, if you will register your vote, and that passes by unanimous vote. The next portion of our agenda has to do with a public hearing on an ordinance regarding the curfew ordinance, and Mr. Muir, if you would introduce that for us, please.
Thank you, Mayor. The last council meeting, you had the first public hearing on this curfew ordinance. This curfew ordinance needs to, it was currently expired, expired, I think in October of 2003, so we've been operating without one. There's been very little change to this document. Again, you had a public hearing last time, there'll be a public hearing here, and then assuming the first reading of the ordinance gets passed tonight, the second reading will be on the 28th, and then the curfew ordinance will be in place.
Okay, I think members of the council are aware of what this ordinance is and what it consists of. Since this is a public hearing, I'll open the public hearing at this time and allow members of the audience, if there's anyone here who wishes to speak either for or against the proposed curfew ordinance, you have an opportunity to do so at this time. Okay, there being none, the public hearing is closed, and we move now. We do need a motion to approve this ordinance on first reading. Councilmember Lanford.
Move to approve this ordinance, number 0200400404.
Councilmember Hutchison.
I would second that motion.
Councilmember Branson.
That was for a second.
We have a motion and a second to approve this ordinance on the curfew. If you will, do we have any discussion on the motion? Okay, there being none, if you will display, if you'll register your vote, I will display it, and that passes by unanimous vote. Item number eight is to consider the, an ordinance regarding regulations for the sale of alcoholic beverages within the city. And at this time, I will ask our city manager to introduce this item, please.
Thank you. As you stated, on May 15th, the city had an affirmative election to authorize the legal sale of beer and wine for off-premises consumption and the legal sale of mixed beverages in restaurants. I'd like to start off, what you have before you is a draft ordinance to allow for these two things. I'm going to start off with the city attorney, Wayne Olson, to explain some of the details of the ordinance and some of the intricacies of it. Later on, I'm going to ask our planning director, James Plisca, to go over the permitting process to explain how that's going to work. Wayne?
The ordinance that the council's considering tonight places specific regulations on businesses that might apply for permits to sell alcohol in the city, since the sale of alcohol was approved in the election. For those of you who were in the pre-council meeting, you heard me explain that the city is handcuffed in the types of regulations it can adopt, but basically, the alcoholic beverage code sets forth specifically what types of regulations can be adopted by the city. And this ordinance mirrors the alcoholic beverage code in that regard. The provisions provide in Section 1 that the sale of beer and wine is prohibited in residential areas of the city. Section 2 prohibits the selling of alcoholic beverages within 300 feet of a church, public or private school, or public hospital, or within 1,000 feet of a private school, if the city council receives a request from the governing body of the private school. And there are very detailed descriptions of, as to how the distances are measured, and there are a few exceptions that are required by state law, which are set forth in the ordinance. Section 3 of the ordinance provides that a permit or license must be issued by the alcoholic beverage code before anybody can sell alcoholic beverages within the city. And Section 4 specifically adopts the provisions of the alcoholic beverage code as far as the hours that beer or wine is sold in the city. And then finally, the ordinance adopts the maximum fee for permits that are allowed by state law, which is 50% of the fee that the state charges for alcoholic beverage permits or licenses. So again, basically, what this ordinance does is it mirrors the state statute, which is all we can do with regard to the regulation of alcoholic beverages. I know that the council was interested in adopting some stricter regulations than are set forth in this ordinance, but the distance regulations and the types of uses that the distance is applied to are specifically regulated by the code, and we're not allowed to change those in any regard. So the ordinance in front of the council, as it pertains to the matters that I've discussed, is as strict as we can make it.
James, why don't you go ahead and go over the permitting process?
Thank you, Mayor. City council members, citizens of Holton City. Behind me are forms and the application material that the applicant will pick up at the Texas Alcoholic Beverage Commission. The Texas Alcoholic Beverage Commission is at 6800 Manhattan Boulevard in Fort Worth, Texas. The applicant will first pick up the forms at the commission, fill out the forms, and then proceed in Phase 1 process of the application.
Could I ask you to take the mic off and hold it in hand as you move back and forth? I think there'll be some people watching on HCTV that would like to...
Okay. Mayor, I'll just remain at the podium and then refer to the forms.
Thank you.
Excuse me. The Phase 1 application provided by the TABC will be given to the applicant. Then the applicant must fill out all the necessary material or the information on the form and proceed to the state comptroller's office. The state comptroller's office is at 4040 Fossil Creek Boulevard, Suite 100 in Fort Worth, Texas, as well. Once they submit the information to the state comptroller's office, they will then proceed to the necessary city hall, which will be my department, the zoning department of the city of Holton City, which there, at that point, they'll submit their application with the city and pay the $30 permit fee for off-premise beer and wine sales and the mixed beverage permit. There will be no fee associated for that, as per the ordinance, we cannot charge until the third year for that fee. The applicant will submit that form. My department will go out and measure the distances necessary from the churches or the schools, and then proceed with the application and forward it to the city secretary's office, where she will notify the applicant that the city has indeed processed the necessary information. The applicant will then come forward to city hall, pick up the application, and proceed back to the TABC and submit this application. The application, once it's submitted to the TABC, will take 60 days from that date it submitted, and have the necessary hearings and procedures through the TABC for the processing of this form.
Members of the council, questions for either the attorney or for Mr. Plisca? Councilmember Lanford?
Mr. Plisca, one of the concerns we have is can't sell alcoholic beverages within 300 feet of a church, public or private school, or public hospital. How do we know where private schools are located?
We have all that information through the TAD records that I keep in my department, and that would be the Terran appraisal district records.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Further questions by the council for either the attorney or the planning director? Okay, there being none, thank you, Mr. Plisca.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Olson. I'm ready at this time to receive a motion regarding item number eight, the alcoholic beverage regulations establishing permits and license fees ordinance that we have before us. Councilmember Lanford?
Move we approve ordinance number 020040601 regarding sale of alcohol in Holton City.
Okay, we have a motion to approve as presented. Do I have a second? Councilmember Branson?
A second.
Have a motion and a second to approve. Any discussion on the motion? Okay, there being none, if you will, register your vote. Okay, we have, the motion passes with one no. Do you have that? Okay. All right, we move now to the next item on the agenda. Actually, we come now to items nine and 10. These items concern two separate ethics complaints that were filed with the city against two different elected officials, one against Councilmember Sutton and one against myself. These complaints involve mailings sent out during the recent election in which candidates among the 13 that were running for office were endorsed by the sender, and the senders identified themselves as current office holders. I've asked that these items be placed on the agenda tonight for council consideration and action, and the reason I ask these be placed on the agenda is because I believe that complaints alleging ethics violation against elected officials should be taken seriously, and they need to be addressed openly, they need to be addressed fairly. But I also ask that this item be placed on the agenda tonight, both items nine and 10, because we as a council have a lot of very important issues that this council has before it that it's going to need to be addressing. And I think it's important that when there's a question kind of floating around out there, kind of hanging over the head of the community, that the council needs to take action, they need to deal with the issue, so we can move on to some of the other issues that are facing us as a city. And we have many, many, and I think all of us were very impressed with how many we do have following our, during the course of our retreat this past Saturday, when we took a look at the city as a whole. How we will proceed from here with this, first of all, I want to call on our city attorney to explain our ethics policy for the benefit of the people in the audience and the people who are watching on TV, to discuss the nature of the complaints that have been brought forth, and to discuss the responsibility of the council regarding these complaints. Once he has done that, and everybody is clear, the council is clear in its understanding of why we're here and what we're trying to do with this item, we will then proceed in this manner. Councilmember Sutton's will be addressed first, and Councilmember Sutton, I believe you have your light on.
It was for an explanation. Right, thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Sutton will recuse himself and remove himself from council chambers while this item is being discussed, and we have the appropriate form on file to validate that removal of himself, and the reason for that is since this item involves him, it would be better for him to be out of the picture, out of the council chamber, while the council, while his colleagues are addressing that in order to assure objectivity to the fullest extent possible. At the appropriate time after item number nine is dealt with, Councilmember Sutton will come back in after the council has taken whatever action it deems appropriate, and I will recuse myself under the same circumstances, and the mayor pro tem will take control of the meeting and conduct it regarding item number 10. Once Councilmember Sutton, since we're dealing with item number nine at this point, recuses himself and leaves the council chamber, then we'll give the citizen who brought the complaint forth the first opportunity to address the council. Once that citizen has addressed the council, then members of the audience who have filled out speakers' cards, and we have, we have two speakers' cards filled out, they'll be given an opportunity to address the council regarding this item. And once the audience speakers who have filled out the cards have addressed the council, then we will entertain questions from the council, comments from the council, and I will ask for a motion regarding the pleasure of the council regarding this. So at this time, Mr. Sutton, are you ready to recuse yourself from...
Yes.
Okay. And we'll proceed immediately with our city attorney to explain the ethics policy, the nature of the complaints, and the responsibility of the council in this regard.
Thank you, Mayor. In 2001, the city council adopted a Code of Ethics that governs the behavior and actions of council members and city employees. And the Code of Ethics provides that any person who believes that a violation of the code has occurred may file a complaint with the city council or city manager, and such a complaint has been filed against Councilmember Sutton. As the mayor was discussing, the allegations stem from political endorsements that Mr. Sutton allegedly made endorsing five specific candidates who ran for office in the May 15, 2004 election. And the allegations are that those actions violated several sections of the Code of Ethics, including the section that states it is the policy of the city that the proper operation of democratic government requires that public officials and employees be independent, impartial, and responsible only to the people of the city, and that public office and public employment are positions of public trust, imposing a duty of a fiduciary upon all employees and office holders, who are not to use their public position for personal gain, and also that the public have confidence in the integrity of the government. Further, the complaint against Mr. Sutton alleges that there was a violation of a provision of the Code of Ethics that states that no officer of the city shall grant special consideration, treatment, or advantage to any citizen. The Code of Ethics provides that once a complaint is filed, that the city council, if it involves an elected official, may investigate any alleged violation of the Code of Ethics and may take disciplinary action as deemed appropriate. And therefore, that's what the city council is hearing tonight, this complaint, and then the council has the obligation to make a decision on whether or not there is a violation of the Code of Ethics. As was discussed, it was my recommendation that Councilmember Sutton abstain from participating in this matter, because the complaint was specifically directed against him. I also discussed with the city council the issue about the fact that the complaint alleges that Councilmember Sutton endorsed and supported candidates who are now elected as city council members, and the question came to me about whether or not they should also abstain from participating on this. And based upon my advice, I recommended that that not take place. The Ethics Code provides for the city council to resolve ethics complaints against council members, and theoretically, you can have a complaint against the entire council, or in this case, the vast majority of the council, and it appears from the intent of the ethics policy that the purpose of the policy is better served by the entire council hearing the complaint rather than one council member hearing the complaint. So it was my recommendation that... So, it was my recommendation that the remaining council members, even though they were the ones who were supported by the endorsements that were complained about, are qualified to hear the complaint and should in fact sit and hear the complaint against Councilmember Sutton. Mayor, if there are any other questions by the council before you begin your deliberation on this, I'd be glad to answer them.
Members of the council, any questions for the attorney? Okay, if I understand, I do have one just for further clarity. If I understand the nature, the focus of what this council has a responsibility to do tonight is not to decide if Councilmember Sutton has a First Amendment right to do this or not, that's not the issue. It is not whether somebody might like the recommendation or that they might have agreed with it or if there'd been a precedent set if it had ever happened before in Halton City. None of those are the issue, the, at issue here is, if I understand the complaint correctly, is did it violate the ethics ordinance? Is that, is that what we're here for?
That's correct. There are specific provisions in the ethics policy that are prohibited and it is for this city council to make a determination of whether or not the allegations are in fact, or do in fact show a violation of the provisions of the ethics policy.
Okay. Everybody clear on what we're doing? Okay, we'll move forward at this time then. Mr. Ronnie Hack had brought this accusation forth during the course of the campaign against Councilmember Sutton. And Mr. Hack, you'll be given an opportunity at this time to address the council if you'd prefer.
You want my name and address?
Yes, if you would, please.
Ronnie Hack, 4714 Loraine.
Okay.
And like the attorney said, this wasn't filed on the First Amendment because he didn't violate, he didn't violate his First Amendment rights. He's got those amendment rights. But according to our ethics code, he's not supposed to use his office, which he put down at the bottom of that, council member place one. That's using your office to endorse people, one group of people over another group of people. We had more than just five people running for that office. And that violated our ethics code, the way the ethics code's written, the way I read it. Now, I understand that this is going to be all swept under the carpet. That's the word I got. And that's fine if that's what the council wants to do. But if you people out there on TV and out here in the audience remember, there was a lot of yelling and screaming about the last council, members of the last council doing unethical things. So now I guess this is going to be a proud and progressive, we're going to progress and do the same thing here from what I understand, and that's fine. Because there's other ways of doing things and there's other things that can be done if that's what the council wants to do. I know you're not going to remove Mr. White or Mr. Sutton, but let them get away with using their office when they're not supposed to be doing it is the same thing you grafted about the other councils, members doing, unethical things. So if that's what y'all want to do, well, be my guest.
Thank you, Mr. Hack. We have two appearance before the council cards filled out, the first by Mr. John Williams. Mr. Williams, if you'll come forward at this time, give us your name and address for the record and you have six minutes to address the council.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Could I have one minute before I start, though, to congratulate everybody? I didn't get to make the meeting when y'all were all swearing and I want to take a moment to congratulate all the new council members and thank you for the time you spent Saturday in the budget workshops and planning. It's a very important meeting and I'll urge y'all to take it very seriously and I will be behind y'all 100% on it. So, good luck in your endeavors. Now my time starts.
Your six minutes starts now, Mr. Williams.
When did you say the ethics was passed?
2001.
You have a date? Take this off his time, not mine.
May 14, 2001, John.
May 14, 2001. Mr. Mayor, when were you, when were you elected? May?
I was elected in May of 2001.
Okay, I thought that's right. And we discussed in meetings and stuff that you were in and you were pushing for a higher, raise the bar in Halton City and higher standards, and I admire you for that. The reason I'm speaking tonight is on kind of the ethics charges filed against Councilmember Sutton. During the recent elections, there was a long form letter that was sent out. I have one copy with me, I don't have original, I just have a copy, but it was mailed out to the citizens. And for those of you who got it, it was very lengthy, it was about eight and a half by thirteen, it's very nice picture of me on it, they like to use my picture. It asks if the voters were going to ignore the past actions of failed leadership and make a clean break. Well, I had to speak for the people that sitting in this area before you five were here. I don't believe that was failed leadership if it does reflect back on the person that's the mayor. His letter includes quotes from the Star Telegram dating back past year and it states he ran a campaign on a positive change. Doesn't say anything about he ran a positive campaign, just voted on a positive change. Tops of the letter, there's a picture of me, two other council members, one of them was David Avery, I don't know where he figured anywhere into this at all. The mayor was mailing some of my friends and they signed Jim Sutton and some were brought into my office and they were signed by Councilmember Jim Sutton, place one. During the recent recall election that we had in Halton City, I think back in February, I received calls from citizens saying that if they didn't go down and throw the bums out there, we're sitting those five seats, the possibility they could lose their homes. Some people took this serious, thought they were actually going to be thrown out of their house if we stayed in the office. And the history, I have no problem with it, whatever ways they worked to remove the hardest working council at Halton City has had in years. A problem I do have is when you're supposed to be representing the citizens and all the citizens, and I sat right up there where y'all were and I had to represent all the citizens, it always didn't taste good, but you had to represent everybody. I won't dwell on the entire letter, but one item that Councilmember Sutton pointed out was that Mr. Holcomb, Chris Holcomb here, would bring a fresh, prudent Halton City homeowner's perspective to the council, a wise opponent, was married to the recalled member, John Williams. I don't think that was fair to any of the other eight candidates that were running in these different positions. I might have to go ahead and admit Mrs. Williams is my wife, I saw Mrs. Fowler come in a while ago, that's Trey Fowler's mom. They're both related to us, had nothing to do with their ambition to run or, I can't speak for Ms. Fowler. I tried to talk Ms. Williams out of running, I told her that I'd been through it and she had seen what I'd been through, but there were some items that she wanted to continue and have finished. I agree with Mr. Hack that Mr. Sutton, he does have his constitutional rights. They're not after me. They have constitution rights. Do I get extra 30 seconds for that?
The clock's not ticking while it goes on. So you've got 15 seconds back.
Mr. Sutton has the right to endorse anybody he wants to and I believe a public apology to the other people that were running in the election is an order, I think, that a reprimand. I don't know how you would reprimand, when we made this ordinance, I didn't know how they're going to enforce it because, you know, you're going, you do something bad, you're going to give yourself a spanking and that's hard to do. My name did appear in a listing with Trey Fowler when he ran, when he was running for his recall election. And at that time, my name did appear in there as Councilmember John Williams. I did not pay for that ad nor that I, you know, print the ad myself. I think Mr. Sutton is guilty of this. There's some other items that's came up since this, has came up, I won't go into those. But I've got a deal here from you, Mr. Mayor, in 2000 when I was reelected, my election against Janet Craig says that I was reprimanded for racial insensitivity where just comments were made in the Star Telegram, Star Telegram took it and run with it. The bottom deal was what vision is this for our leadership to be proud and progressive when they vote in favor of theirselves? So I asked you the same question tonight and each one of you council members. I don't expect you to run my town on a poll, I don't expect you, you know, to hang him on a cross or anything, but the gentleman did do wrong and he does need to be reprimanded for it, if nothing more than an apology. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Our second speaker filling out an appearance before the city council card on this item, Ms. Jane Fowler. Ms. Fowler, if you'll come forward, give us your name and address for the record, please, and you have six minutes.
Jane Fowler, 3220 Jane Lane. And I would like for Mr. Muir to let y'all know that I did speak with him before the election and I did tell him that after I saw this letter that I would be addressing the issue because, not of sour grapes, Mr. Hutchinson and I have spoken and we agreed that whoever was elected, it wouldn't be a problem, we would represent each other, whichever won. During this time after the letter, I did speak to four of the five people, I contacted Mr. Clark, but he did, I left a message and I didn't hear back from you. But obviously, either Mr. Sutton didn't think that your opponent was any competition or something, I'm not sure what his reason was for leaving you out of the, or leaving someone out of the letter. But my thing tonight is I want Mr. Sutton to know that it states on here, let's see, that I am the mother of recalled Councilman Trey Fowler and I did want him to know that he had made one statement correct in the paper. I am Jane Fowler and I am the mother of Trey Fowler and he was recalled in an election. Now, the thing that kind of bothers me is like the ethics thing and the character and so on, and, you know, character is who you are and reputation is who people think you are. And I'm a little bit upset, if I'm incorrect, would you let me know, mayor or city manager, does Mr. Sutton have a city laptop computer?
Yes.
Okay, so the taxpayers are furnishing Mr. Sutton one. Do any of the other council people have laptop computers furnish them?
No.
No, okay. So, I'm going to assume, which assumptions are not always good, but I'm going to assume that it was a city computer more than likely that printed this letter. And that upsets me greatly to think that my tax dollars are being used to attack other people. I did speak, like I said, with four of the five people that were here in the letter. Mr. Holcomb, visited with you, you told me you knew about the bottom half of the letter. I do need to add, I did talk with you, Calvin, and you had seen, you saw the letter and you said, "I would only have sent the bottom half," your words exactly, you wouldn't have sent the top half, but you would have sent the bottom half. So you knew 50% of it. Mr. Lanford knew nothing about it, Mr. Hutchinson knew nothing about it. And when I spoke with Ms. Reese, she said she knew about 99%. I don't know what 1% of the letter wouldn't be, but she knew about 99% of the letter. And I guess actually, as far as I'm concerned, I don't have a problem, you know, people are either like a mosquito, and if you don't know, mosquitoes attack you in the light, cockroaches attack you in the dark. Soon as the light comes on, they're gone. And I just feel like this letter is a little bit like that because I see three men that have continued to be attacked, had nothing to do actually with the election. So actually, I guess what I'm saying is, as Mr. Williams had said, I think Mr. Sutton owes everyone involved an apology and I think it should be public. And I did want to add that he does have something in common with the Star Telegram. I had given a quote the night of the deal that I was told two things and one of them was that I would basically be attacked by the Star Telegram and almost everything came out except that part. And so, Mr. Sutton's letter's a lot the same way. And like I say, it's not sour grapes, I thank you for what you're doing. I appreciate the fact that you're taking your time because of not only being the mother of Trey Fowler, I have sit in this council chamber for 30 years and I've seen people give their time. I will say, I have never in all of my years seen a few council people attack the others in the way that the five were attacked. And they would tend to agree to disagree, but to publicly stand under a tent, to sign things and to do things and use their position, I've never seen it before. And, you know, it's okay, you can get better, you can get bitter, and I'm not bitter, I'm just glad that it's over and I do hope that you do what is the ethical, right thing to do when you take this into consideration. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Fowler, and thanks to Mr. Hack and Mr. Williams, along with Ms. Fowler, who have taken time out of their schedule to be here tonight to express their feelings regarding the subject matter of item number nine. We have no further members of the audience wishing to speak or having filled out a card to speak at this time. And I'll wait just a second till whatever's going on behind my back is finished. Okay, I'm ready now to move forward with this. Councilmember Branson, your light is on, and then Councilmember Clark.
Thank you, Mayor. First, being a computer person, I want to say something about the city laptop, it does not have the software that could address putting pictures or anything like that, those are probably the most rustic antiquated pieces of equipment I've ever seen. So to hopefully put your mind at ease, Ms. Fowler, I sincerely doubt that a city laptop was capable of even printing a Word document, much less a document like that. And then I have a couple of questions for Mr. Olson.
Okay, please go ahead.
Since we are discussing the ethics policy and what is in the ethics policy compared to what the allegations are, on the sections that were set out in the charges, do any of these apply to these specific mailouts?
Well, that is the council's determination to make.
In your legal opinion?
If you would like to have my legal opinion, I'd be glad to meet with you in executive session, give my opinions on it, but the policy provides for the council to determine whether or not the provisions of the ethics policy have been violated. And the allegations in the letter, which I summarized, refer to for separate provisions in the ethics policy and I'll go over those in specific detail with you if you'd like on what you're looking at.
Will you define fiduciary? In the essence that it's in the ethics policy?
Public trust.
Good, that's...
Anything further?
No, not right now.
Councilmember Clark, I believe you had your light on.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. After examining the complaint which alleges ethics violation, it is my opinion that there's been no showing of a violation of the code of ethics, section 2454A1, because the facts alleged do not show that Jim Sutton is not independent, impartial, responsible only to the people of Halton City. There's been no fact alleged that shows that Jim Sutton has violated the ethics code, section 2452A4, by using his public position for personal gain. There's been no fact alleged that show that Jim Sutton has violated the ethics code, section 2452A5, in any way that has anything to do with the public's having confidence in the integrity of its government. There's been no fact alleged that show the ethics code, section 245A9, by Jim Sutton as he has gained, as he has granted special considerations, treatment, or advantage to any citizen beyond that which is available to every other citizen. In summary, the act of endorsing five specific candidates in and of itself is not a violation of Halton City's ethics code. Therefore, I make a motion finding that based upon the alleged facts, there has been no violation of the codes of ethics by Councilman Jim Sutton.
Okay, you have heard the motion. Councilmember Lanford.
Thank you, Mayor White. Just a little background, I chaired the commission that wrote the ethics ordinance and nowhere in our discussions do I recall any situation like this coming up in the discussions that would attach themselves to section 2452, that public officials and employees be independent, impartial, and responsible only to the people of the city. That was not ever discussed in terms of an elected official weighing in and being partial, if you will, in an election campaign. I think it's generally understood that politics is partial. That's why we have politics, is because... if you will, in an election campaign. I think it's generally understood that politics is partial. That's why we have politics, is because people have decisions to make. There's not a lot deciding whether two plus two equals four. You know, I mean, those are things that we all understand. Politics is about competing goods or sometimes competing bads, things that aren't clear. And that's why we have politics, that's why we have a democracy, is so we can address those kinds of issues. The assumption being that whoever gets the most votes, that's the current version of what's right. And next time around, it might be a different version. And we've all, those of us who have lived in Halton City have seen it swing several different ways several different times over the years. And that's fine, that's real fine. I just want to address something too about the idea of being independent and impartial. It's odd that both Mr. Sutton and Mayor White, who both endorsed me, both of them asked me, personally told me, that all they expected of me was to be independent and impartial. And so I think that speaks well of them. And finally, I'd like to just say that I appreciate everyone who has come here tonight. John, bless his heart, he endorsed me also and contributed to my campaign. That's a matter of public record, John. And I appreciate that. I understand that people expect us to be fair and honest, and I believe in all my heart that Mr. Sutton and Ms. White have done that. Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion. I'm in line for a second. Councilmember Holcomb.
I'd like to make a second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion on the motion? And let's remember, the motion is finding- Would you read that motion for us, to be sure we-
Yes, the motion is finding no violation against the city ethics ordinance.
Okay, that's the motion before us, say any discussion? There being none, if you will register your vote, I will display it. And that carries, the motion carries with one abstaining and Councilmember Sutton not present. Okay, with that, we will call, someone want to go get Councilmember Sutton?
Cody, do you know where the mayor's office is next door to City Secretary? Would you go get Mr. Sutton, please?
Okay, and as I explained earlier while they're getting him, how we'll proceed from here when he returns, because Councilmember Sutton is the mayor pro tem, he will assume control of the meeting, and I will recuse myself, and I'll be down in the mayor's council office awaiting action of the council. Did you find that? Okay. Councilmember Sutton, if you'll remain standing, the action of the council was a finding of no fault, no violation of the ethics ordinance. With that, as mayor pro tem, I'll ask you to come to my position at this time, assume control of the meeting, and when the council's taking action, if you'll send Officer Cody after me, I'll come more quickly than Mayor Pro Tem Sutton did.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Before we open up the public hearing, are there any comments from the council, the city attorney, or the city manager at this time? Okay.
Yeah, I might. Mayor Pro Tem. Just so the audience is aware that this is a separate ethics complaint that was filed against Mayor White. It involves allegations of violations of the same sections of the Code of Ethics that I read previously, and it's very similar. The facts behind the complaint are based upon the mayor endorsing five specific candidates over others who were running for the election on the May fifteenth, two thousand and four city election.
Okay, thank you. All right, if there are no further comments by the council or anyone, we'll go ahead and open up this public hearing, and the first person that I have here is-
I'm sorry, Mayor Pro Tem, it's not a public hearing.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay. This is a agenda, other business, ethics complaint, and we need to open it up for discussion, okay? By the, thank you very much. This is called baptism by fire. This is open for discussion. And citizens that want to speak, and I have received a paper with two names on it, and the first name that I'm going to call to the podium is John Williams. And John, if you can state your name and your address for the record when you get there, and the city secretary will resume timing when you begin, and you have five minutes.
You've got a council member down there with a light on, I don't know if he just practicing his light or-
I was about to refer to him because I didn't think he saw it, I wanted to make sure that he got noticed.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Okay, do we know what, what are we discussing? Do we know this?
John, also, you've got six minutes because Calvin gave six, so-
Do we know, are you going to read in the record why we're here on this, or are we just going to take off or?
Well, the reason why we're here is Agenda item number ten, consideration and/or action regarding the ethics complaint filed against Mayor Calvin White.
Okay, thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. The first deal didn't surprise me about the doing away with the ethics deals, and like I say again, when we made that up and they brought the ethics to us, I had to ask at that time in two thousand and one if something came up about a council member, who would rule on it? And they said, "Well, we'll rule on it ourselves." Sounded good to me. I'm here to speak against the ethics charges on the mayor. The mayor took an active role in the petition drive against the recall of past council members. Back when he did this, we'd had a discussion item on the council, and we discussed both your and his position in that, and he was reprimanded, and he turned that around into a joke and said he'd wear it with a badge of honor. I was a little bit taken by it because usually badge of honors and awards like that are given to you, not self-appointed. Now, the mayor's charged breaking not a federal law, not a state law, but rather just a simple code of ethics law set by the city charter in the city of Halton City. It clearly states that an elected official can and cannot do. Calvin White can support anybody he wants to for anything he wants to, as long as he stays Calvin White, it's his First Amendment right. When you become a council member, and I don't know if the attorney's got that far with y'all yet, you give up a lot of your rights being a council member. Made me very angry when I was a council member, when I was pointed out by Mr. Olson his firm, rights that I'd given up. Mayor White selected five council members, or five candidates, to run for council. Fortunately, those five council members are here tonight. There was one council person, or actually eight others, that ran against, you know, in the same campaign y'all ran. One of them was a young Asian gentleman, and the mayor had asked him, the Asian guy come by my lot upset because the mayor had asked him to step aside and not run this race, and maybe he'd put him on a board and possibly he could be better known later down the road, and they could help him get a seat that time. Now, I know from observing the mayor, you know, he'll claim innocence, which he's not going to be able to do that because he's outside now, and so usually he has his tablet up there behind where you're sitting, Mr. Sutton, with a hundred and one reasons why he's right and everybody else is wrong. He'll claim, former council did, same as he did, like I said, on Trey's recall. We didn't independently send out anything for Mr. Fowler during that recall. The majority of the voters had placed Mr. Fowler in office at that time, and so we were just supporting what the majority of the voters had wanted, and we felt like we were representing what the citizens of Halton City want. The mayor did mail out a choice group of his people, of voters, saying that he had selected these five people. Now, the attorney told you a while ago that the council cannot give out any special favors to anybody in the city, nor can any of the city's staff or employees. You can't give a special favor. If I was city employee, I couldn't come up there and give you, you know, eight of you a quarter and not give two of you a quarter. I'd have to give every one of you a quarter, I'd have to be fair and equal, and that's the simple part that we're trying to place here. When the mayor added to the bottom of this letter, Mayor Calvin White, some folks thought that it came from the city of Halton City. I had some people calling, wondering why the city was endorsing these five people. Mr. Hack was noted earlier this week as being my puppet, and I refer to Mr. Hack as Ronnie because Ronnie and I have known each other since the seventh grade. We split up in high school, hadn't seen each other in years, ran into each other about three or four years ago when he come to my car lot and bought a car, and he still talks to me. Anyone who knows us will tell you simply that we're not puppets. You know, I'm not his puppet, he's not my puppet. Now, Mr. Hack, he won't talk about it that much. He's a decorated Vietnam veteran. He does have a badge of honor. He's got a Bronze Star that he earned. And sit here after he's made these allegations against you and the mayor, and for this council to sit there and ignore them and just say there hasn't been a foul, you're going to have to get on the stick, Mr. Clark. I mean, I don't know who wrote that for you, but you-
Mr. Williams, you will address the mayor?
Okay.
And you will not address the council?
I can't address the mayor right now, he's out, so I'll address you.
I am acting as the mayor at this time.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, Mr. Clark read that out just excellent. I'm kind of anxious to see if he reads the second one out as well, or if someone else had been written one out. I think if this is what you're going to do with your ethics policy, the mayor wanted to raise the bar on it. I think what we need to do is, if it's going to be a mockery and a laugh, and we're just not going to do anything with it, I think the ethics policy should be removed at the next charter section. I think so. Sit down, Ms. Branson, do you have a question for me before I sit down?
Mayor Pro Tem?
Yeah, after, are you finished, John? Are you finished, John?
Are you going to address the mayor, or do you want me to sit down?
No, well, I just want to comment on something that you said. You mentioned the Asian gentleman that ran, was, had filed to run, who happens to be one of my neighbors. And when I'd heard the allegation that the mayor had asked him not to run, that didn't quite sound right to me. So I contacted him and I talked to him, and it was not the current mayor that asked him not to run. So I just think that, you know, if you're going to make that statement from there, that if I know another side of the story, that I should probably make that statement from here as well.
You know where Mr. Sully County is tonight?
No.
San Diego, California.
Well, but I spoke with him back during the campaign.
He came to my, I didn't go to him, he came to my office, and he told me the mayor, Calvin White, now, you know, he could have lied to me, I don't know.
I don't know that he lied, but I think the word mayor may have different meanings in different cultures, and that may be where the disconnect was on that, but it was not our current mayor that asked him not to do that.
Okay, the five minutes are up, and we need to bring the meeting to order. I know, the five minutes are up. Thank you for coming to the stand.
Thank you very much, and I urge, whoever reads this next one, goodwill to you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, the next one on, next one to speak in the public discussion is Jane Fowler, and if you could come to the stand and state your name and address, and the city secretary will resume a six-minute timer when you start speaking.
Jane Fowler, thirty-two twenty Jane Lane. First, I would like to address, and I know I can't address, but I, if I have not erased it, have it on tape, that the Vietnamese gentleman that was running, I have it on tape where he stated that the mayor had asked him not to run, that he would put him on a board, and then he would have a better chance. Also, not particularly, but yet having to do with the character of the mayor, he did a year ago go to Eddie Kimbrough, or speak with Eddie Kimbrough and ask Eddie Kimbrough not to run in place one against Mr. Sutton. And he did tell Mr. Kimbrough that he would have somebody come by and see him, and that was Mr. Sutton and Mr. Lewis. So it just sort of all falls into place that, you know, that's not the only one that he's asked not to run. But actually, like I said a while ago, it's, I really do want the best for this city. It's not a matter of being here six months, six years, sixteen years or twenty-six years. And I'm going to use somebody for an example, which probably y'all don't know who it is, but Mr. Cates that had the hardware store, I was speaking with his son, David, he had a daughter that, we started first grade together, and she passed away in a fire in Watauga. But I asked him, I said, "David, do you mind if I use your dad for an example on character and reputation?" Because that seems to be a lot of what the people in Halton City don't know how to, you know, separate a person's character from their reputation. And it was only maybe a week or two before Mr. Cates passed away that I went and had a conversation with him, and it wasn't, it was about me running. And we enjoyed and laughed about several things about Trey, how he would be mad at Trey one day, and then he wouldn't be mad at Trey. And of course, when he referred to me, it was Mary Jane because it went back fifty-something years to the first grade. But see, that, a lot of people knew Mr. Cates as having the reputation of a staunch businessman that was kind of hard to get along with, and he was going to sit in front of the tractor. But when you, that was his reputation. But see, his character was that he did a lot of things for people that nobody ever knew about. And that's because he knew who he was. And in our last conversation, that's what he told me. He said, "You know what, Mary Jane?" He said, "That recall, he said, I gave a Mr. Francis a check for four hundred and ninety-five dollars, and I gave a Mr. Maurice Perkins a check for two hundred and fifty." But he said, "You know, they were smart enough to have two people do this recall thing, which, you know, had to do with you and Ms. Branson and the mayor." And so, see, his, what he told me was though, he said, "You know, I was mad at the council for firing Richard Torres." But he said, "When they started attacking Trey's character, that was a different situation." So he said, "You know, that's when I took the sign out of my yard." So I guess as people in Halton City that have lived here all your life, and there's not many of us left, it's mostly new people. We've discussed that, that there used to be pretty much a core of about two thousand, and it's down to about eight hundred, nine hundred that are, you know, diehard, going to stay here, potholes and all. But anyway, I do want y'all to really consider the fact that Mr. White, you know, I know that it's his son-in-law's, in-laws that do all the mailings, but I have to say, if I ever do run for anything else again, I want y'all's input because I spent almost five hundred dollars and I didn't do one mailing. And my signs were half as big as the recall things and y'all's. So I just applaud you for what you can do with such a small amount of money, and I hope you do that well with our budget. So thank you for your time, and do consider that the mayor has overstepped his boundaries. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Fowler. Okay, we have one more to speak, and we may have another one after that. If Ronnie Hack would like to speak after this next one, that would be welcome. We now have Trey Fowler, and Trey, if you could come to the stand and state your name and address, and the secretary will resume timing as you begin to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem. Trey Fowler, sixty-two seventeen Midway, Fort Worth, Texas. Just came to take a minute, I didn't even come prepared, I just came from work, so y'all have to apologize my attire. Didn't believe I'd be speaking again, I got the opportunity to speak last meeting, and maybe every time from now on then. I stood before this council right here, left that seat, and came down to this podium probably two months into my term, to speak as a private citizen. And I was reprimanded for that. Stated my name, address, everything that I was supposed to do, but that was unethical. And yet, which code of ethics or which policies are we going to follow in the city now? You know, I'm having problems understanding, it's not sour grapes, it's just I would like everyone, we talk about treating people fairly and- like everyone, we, we talk about treating people fairly and being fair with our citizens. Mr. Sutton, in your, your letter that you sent out, you stated that Mr. Holcomb was a homeowner, which is a bold-faced lie. I picked up the phone and called Mr. Holcomb and spoke to him. He said he's not a homeowner. So what are we gonna go by? And tha, and that's all I'm asking, I'm not trying to be controversial or anything else, I'm just trying to say, we're gonna put literature out that says one thing, we're gonna have a code of ethics that says one thing, but yet we're not gonna follow them. We can sweep anything under the rug and have prepared statements. I don't have a prepared statement tonight, I never have. I don't have an agenda against you guys. I just wanna say, if we're gonna claim and proclaim and profess to be people of ethics and character, let's be ethical, and let's have good character. Let's not say it when it applies to someone else, we're gonna hold their feet to the fire. The council that reprimanded me did it because that's what the, the code, the code of ethics said they were supposed to do. It was a technicality. I came down, spoke before the council, stated my name, stated my business, everything else, but it was a technicality that said that they needed to do something, so they reprimanded me. That was fine. These were friends and colleagues of mine. You know, I didn't have a problem with it, but just 'cause your friends and colleagues are up here now, if they've done something wrong, stand up and do something about it. Y'all are no different than anyone that was sitting here before. Only thing is, it's about perception. You know, y'all perceive that I was bad, or John was bad, or someone else was bad, and you didn't care for that person, so we're gonna say they're unethical, and they're, they're immoral, and have poor character, but yet we have something that's written right there in front of us in black and white, and we're gonna ignore that because they're a friend, or they're a person that's a colleague of ours? I thought y'all were supposed to be above this. That's what you wrote, "Positive change." Let's be above it. Thank you. Are there any questions? I'm sorry.
Thank, thank you for your comments, Mr. Fowler. Let's, uh, go ahead and call up, uh, Ronnie Hack if he wants to come up. You, you can take your seat now. Oh, I'm sorry, uh, let me recognize Councilman Holcomb.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim. Am I allowed to, uh, react or address anything that was stated there as far as...
If you've got a clarification of anything, certainly you can...
Yeah, I do have a clarification.
Proceed.
As we know, he, I say "he" meaning Mr. Fowler, made a comment regarding perception, and, uh, he also made a comment about not, uh, reading from notes or, uh, reading from a script. Well, sometimes that does help, Mr. Fowler, because if you recall, our conversation didn't entail me saying I was not a homeowner. It said technically, my name was not listed on a mortgage at this time. We have not completed the paperwork process on the house that I live at. The original homeowner that's listed on the mortgage, and I have an actual agreement, signature, signed, notarized, uh, finances have changed hands, but as far as, uh, the actual paperwork process of a mortgage having my name on it, TAD has no record of me living at that address. So, that's something I'm working on now as a, just a young, blue-collar, Holton City citizen. Thank you.
Thank you, council member. Okay, um, if Ronnie Hack is in the room, he was the one that brought the original charges. If you'd like to speak, Mr. Hack? If you'd state your name and address for the record, and the city secretary will resume timing whenever you reach the podium.
This is Ronnie Hack, forty-seven fourteen, Lorraine. The only thing I've got to say is, the mayor and you, Mr. Sutton, sat up here one night at a meeting and said, "We wanna be held to higher accountability, higher level of accountability, higher level of ethics and everything." Now, when it's done, you're not mayor enough to stand up and say, "I did wrong." If that's what we got for leadership, I feel sorry for Holton City.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Hack. Okay, uh, I'm gonna open it up, there are no more, um, speakers cards, so I'm gonna open it up to the council for discussion at this time. And I'm gonna recognize Councilman Lanford first.
Thank you, Jim. Um, I wanted to respond a little bit to, uh, something that Trey said, uh, comparing what, what the council action was against him, uh, for representing himself and his interest, uh, while sitting on the, uh, city council and, and coming out to represent him as, representing himself as a, as a citizen. I, I will tell you, I have never, ever, for one second doubted, uh, Trey's character. I wanna say that publicly. My sense was that Trey always felt in his heart that he was doing nothing wrong, and that's what I think got him in trouble, because he didn't pay attention to the details. And the details were that you can't represent your own interests while you're sitting on the P and Z board or the city council, uh, even if you have no intent to do any harm. That, that much is clear. Uh, I, again, I helped write that ethics, uh, code, and so I, I know what the intent was, and in fact, Trey and I had a couple of conversations at different occasions about that, and, uh, and he understood, uh, and said that was not my intent, and I accepted that. I believe Trey is of good character. That is different in my mind, just my, my single opinion, personal opinion, is that the, the charges brought tonight against, uh, Mayor White regards, uh, a totally different interpretation of what the ethics ordinance says. I don't, I don't see that there's any, anything in here, again, that says that you can't, a politician can't politic, and that's exactly what happened here. It was, again, it's, it's count, runs counter to me to understand how, again, Mayor White could ask me specifically to be independent and impartial if he himself was not being independent and impartial. That's all he asked of me. Lastly, I would like to, uh, just add this comment about the, the recall. The recall has deeply divided and wounded this city, and, and people have been really hurt by it. I didn't sign any recall petitions because I think recall tends to be a, it tends to be a mob rule. It's the heat of the moment. Our, our founding fathers specifically left recall out of our national constitution for that very reason, because sometimes people need some, some time to sit and think and mull over some things that are, while, while the rumors are flying around, and, and buy some time. We don't have that privilege, it's a past deed, and now then, we really do need to move forward as a city. And I would just ask this city and the citizens of this city, ask yourself, what's to be gained by the failure of this council and its leadership? I personally don't see it. I don't see what this city gains if this city council is impaired. Doesn't mean you have to like us. I'm just asking you for, give us a chance to get our feet under us, we're on a steep eh, part of the learning curve here, and we actually could use some help. When we, when we looked at that budget for the first time, that, that, that turned some heads, I'm gonna tell you. And I, I wanna say right here, right now, my hat's off to the previous council for doing as well as they did with as little as they had, and my hat's off to this staff, the city staff, for the same thing. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Lanford. I'm gonna recognize Councilman Clark.
After examining the complaint which alleged ethics violation, it is my own opinion that there's been no showing of a violation of the Code of Ethics, Section two, four, five, or A1, because the facts alleged do not show that Calvin White is not independent, impartial, and responsible only to the people of Holton City. There's been no facts alleged that show that Calvin White has violated the Code of Ethics, Section two, four, five, two, A4, by using his public position for personal gain. There's been no facts alleged that show that Calvin White has violated the Code of Ethics, Section two, four, five, two, A5, in any way that has anything to do with the public having convinced, having convinced in the integrity of his government. There is no facts alleged that show that the Code of Ethics, Section two, four, five, four, A9, has violated, was violated by Calvin White, as he has granted special considerations, treatment advantage to any citizen beyond that which is affordable to every other citizen. In summary, the act of endorsing five specific candidates in and of itself is not a violation of Holton City's ethics code. Therefore, I make a motion finding that based upon the alleged facts, there has been no violation of the Code of Ethics by Mayor Calvin White.
Thank you, Councilman Clark. Do I have a second on that motion? Councilman Reese?
That's for a second.
Thank you very much. Uh, is there any discussion on the motion in a second? Y'all have heard the, the motion, is there any questions or discussion? Hearing and seeing none, then I ask you to register your vote. The vote passes, would, uh, would, uh, Mayor White be retrieved, please? Okay, we're gonna wait until the mayor comes back in before we proceed with any further business. Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Plank. Uh, the finding was that, uh, there, there was no violation of our ethics policy.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim, for, uh, Mayor Pro Tim Sutton, for conducting this section of the meeting. How many, uh, visitor citizens, speakers do we have?
Yes, three.
Okay, can we take about a five-minute stretch break? We've been here nearly a couple of hours. If you need to get up and move around, but no more than five minutes, and let's, let's Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we're back in session after taking a stretch break, and we come now to the Visitor Citizens Forum. Uh, we do have four individuals who have filled out, uh, requests to, uh, speak before the council at this time. I wanna remind you that this time is set aside for any person who has business before the council that is not scheduled on the agenda. These four individuals have filled out speakers' request cards, uh, there will be a limit of, uh, what does it say? Six minutes, uh, allowed to each speaker. Uh, council cannot discuss or debate any issue brought forth at this time, nor can any formal, uh, formal action be taken, because this was not posted in accordance with the, uh, Texas Open Meetings Act. So, uh, with that, we will begin our Visitor Citizens Forum. Our first individual, uh, Mr. Jack Lewis. Uh, Mr. Lewis, if you'll come forward, give us your name and address, and the subject you've listed, uh, is you wanna speak, uh, on the subject of the elderly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I'm Jack Lewis, I live at forty-six hundred Savelle. Yes, I'd like to, uh, address the council, thank you, and also, uh, I'd also congratulate all of you in your winning this, uh, election, and look forward for you serving our community, and ask all of us to cooperate by trying to, uh, work together to make our city a better place to live. I just thank God that he is still hanging in there and putting people in office that can do that, so thank you very much. A few years ago, I was elected to the Texas Silver-haired Legislature and served for four years before choosing not to run again. During this time, uh, we became associated more so with the elderly, we're elected by the people over sixty with this Texas Silver-haired Legislature, and I found a need. I knew about it, but you're really not in touch with it until you start seeing it closer. So during those four years, we saw the need that we needed, uh, to try to keep our seniors in their homes longer. So we introduced a resolution three years ago to the Northeast Senior Leadership Group here in Tarrant County, to freeze the homestead tax on this group. For all the taxing entities, the schools were already frozen by the state. I got my tax statement recently, and it shows frozen, it's the same tax that was collected that year, the year I turned sixty-five. And so we thought it'd be only fair, and also helpful, that the other taxing entities, including cities, the county, the Tarrant County Junior College, which by the way, did vote to freeze the tax on seniors, and, uh, the hospital district, there was four others that we won. So we introduced it, it was passed. We followed this legislation through the House of Representatives, through the Texas Silver-haired Legislature, and to be honest, that was the toughest one to get it through, they booed it number-one resolution. But it was a struggle, and they were the ones, basically, that age group that we were addressing. So it passed, passed the House, passed the Senate. The governor told us personally, and he did, sign legislation to place it on the ballot for the people of Texas to vote on it. They did, last year. Eighty-one percent of the people of Texas approved it, eighty-one percent. Say, man, you're talking about overwhelming, that was more of a, that was more of a majority than this council was elected by. Okay, ninety-two percent voted here in Holton City. Favorable. So, it was passed, and, uh, I consider it a mandate, and I wanna thank Councilmember Sutton and Councilmember Branson, they voted, along with two others, to approve it on first reading back in first part of the year. And normally, you, you, you had to vote on a second reading, I believe this alcohol deal that evidently is pretty high priority was on the agenda tonight. Now, the second reading is usually a formality, and you know what, the second reading, it doesn't become official until it is passed. So I would urge this council to place this on the... Good gracious, time flies when you're having fun. But anyway, we would urge you to pass this. In fact, I thought about this taxes, and this is on the issue of the taxes, sir. Endorse the incumbent TCC trustee, and I'm having lunch with him next week. He's a real nice guy, and voters did right. Now, I lost, but they did right. That guy is the best qualified, real nice guy, and he was when he was running. We had real good, and so I have no problems with him, but I was thinking, I may have to file on these elected officials that sign, including our Congresswoman. But anyway, the elderly need help, and we appreciate those guys considering that.
Fifteen seconds to go.
So we would, I'm gonna use all of it, you know? But we would appreciate y'all using this next, this next council meeting to approve this. Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is James, is it Meadows or Medors?
Meadows.
Meadows. Mr. Meadows, if you'll come forward, give us your name and address for the, for the record, and you want to speak on the subject of the Constitution.
Yes, sir, I sure do, and I thank you for the opportunity, Mr. Mayor, and I have worked hard myself to try to get this not to happen.
Would you give us your name and address, please?
My name is James W. Meadows. I live at 3142 Ray Drive West.
Okay. You have six minutes.
Uh, I don't think I'll need that much, but I sure do thank you. I talked to Mr. Mirror before, before he became city manager. I take, I told him about this property out there that was not large enough in the frontage to build up a house. It only had about seventeen feet at the front, at the curb. It also had a drainage pipe from the two hills coming down there that went right down through there, in which my understanding is, there's supposed to be fifteen feet on each side of it before you can build a building. Also, the, the, I've talked to the, the, the Tarrant County Builders Code, and it also says that it has to be forty-two feet at the curb before you can build in, in Tarrant County. So so far, from what I've found out, I'm not blaming the, the city manager because I don't think I made myself clear. So I, actually, I guess it was my fault, but my neighbor also come up and talked to him before he become city manager, and taking him out and showed him the property. But at that time, it, it looked like a big property because it wasn't fenced off and it wasn't marked. So I suppose he thought, well, they could build there. Anyway, they got a building permit to build on this property, in which was not large enough on the front. They, they built a two-car garage. There's only one car entrance in it. If he parks anything on the street, he parks in front of somebody else. And also, he's, these, I'm not talking about people that moved there because they probably thought it was a good deal. I don't know. But I also talked to the man before he sold, he built on it, the man that owned it before, and he said that he was going to build a house there if he had to take property off somebody else. Well, that's exactly what the city has done, because here's what happened. They taken and put the water meter about four inches over on another property, and also put the water line right on the property. From my understanding, that's illegal for the city to do this.
Mr. Meadows, if I could, you had signed up to speak on the subject of the Constitution. Is what you're saying leading to that?
It's a leading to it, yes, sir. Because if you do an infraction against the people of this city, that's against the Constitution. Also, if you put something on another man's property that pertains to another property so that they can build on it, that also is against the Constitution of the United States. Anytime you do something, again, American, you're going against the Constitution of the United States, and that is the main thing. Now, if, if this city don't, don't recognize that the people has a right, and they have a right to their property, they keep telling me that, hey, they, the city owns ten feet back on your property. They can do whatever they want to on it. They can put a water meter on if they want to for another house. That's not legal, and that's not constitutional. Both of them are wrong, and I, I would like for this council to take under consideration that they take an oath to uphold the Constitution of the United States. And I told Mr. Mirror, there's only one way you can correct it, and that way was to completely, whoever caused it, pay for the removal of that house, and also to, to make restitution to those that they violated. And that's, and I think that would be correction of the Constitution. You can't, you ask forgiveness for it, because you can't get forgiveness for walking on the citizen of the United States, and this is exactly what has been done in that neighborhood. The whole neighborhood is, because anyone parks there, it's right on the curve. Anybody parks there, two cars comes in, they have a possibility of hitting head-on. Matter of fact, I've seen one, you're already doing it.
Mr. Meadows, you have one minute on your time.
Well, I, I think I've said enough, and I.
You still have a minute if you choose to use it.
Well, I think I've have said what, what needs to be said. I've talked to Mr. Mirror, and he's, he's been real courteous. I'm not saying that he wasn't, because he's been nice, but the thing of it is, I, I blame myself because I could not get this across, and they say it's the law. Well, the law cannot override the Constitution of the United States. I don't care who makes it. If this council makes a law, and if it's against the Constitution of the United States, matter of fact, there is a lot of them made by this, by the United States government, but.
You have fifteen seconds.
Okay.
Please go ahead.
Well, I sure do thank you for the opportunity, and I want to, I appreciate all of you councilmen, and I know what kind of a job you got. You've got to take care of a big, big problem that's here in this city.
Thank you, Mr. Meadows. We appreciate, appreciate your comments. Our next speaker tonight, Ms. Jane Fowler. If you will, Ms. Fowler, come forward. Your subject is public information, and if you will, give us your name and address for the record, and you have six minutes.
Jane Fowler, 3220 Jane Lane. Okay, public information being, I know that during the election, Ms. Reese, I believe it was, talked about open door policy and so on and so forth. I know that you've changed the time of the council meetings. You've moved them up thirty minutes, so it's a little difficult sometimes to get here at seven instead of seven-thirty, possibly. The other thing is, what I'm asking y'all to consider as a council would be two things: either move pre-council into this council chamber so enough people can get in here to hear what's going on, or do away with pre-council and just discuss the issues during the council meeting. And the reason that I'm asking that is, I sit out two weeks ago in the hallway, and I have not had the opportunity, Mr. Mirror, to call you and ask you, but I know that the council passed a $250,000 renovation for the seniors, I believe. I also heard that frees and nickels would be paid, I think, fifty-three thousand. Okay, see, and that's the thing. I didn't, thank you for shaking your head and verifying that that is not true, but still, my, what I would like for y'all to consider as a council, and I, I would like to tell Ms. Reese, as a citizen, I understand that the best way to have an open door policy is not, some cases, one-on-one, but basically for the entire city to, you know, be able to see what's going on, and, and for those that have a difficult time getting here at seven. If it's all televised, then you can go rent the tape and you can see just like that what was discussed in pre-council, and if you can't, you know, discuss it, then if you could just move it out, if y'all would consider that. And then the other thing, you're right, I spoke with Mr. Lanford for just a second, and he said, "Y'all do have some, y'all do have some work cut out for you," so I told him, "I'm glad it's y'all and not me," and actually, it does have to do with the budget. I, I think that it's gonna be really tough, cutting taxes or going up on taxes, whatever decision you have to make. Those are the decisions that are not fun. And then, I guess, last but not least, as a council, I was looking on here where it says executive session, and I want y'all to know that, like I said earlier, I, I admire you for taking on this job, and I do want you to, I don't know how executive exactly goes, but I do know there's an item on here where four out of the eight people sitting there were totally against getting rid of Mr. Torres. So I guess, as a citizen, my question is now, how are you going to address that? Is it going to just be, we now have a new city manager and we're gonna pay this lawsuit? Or are we going to consider what? I don't, I don't know. I just know it's printed on the agenda, and I do know that four, four out of eight were totally against the gentleman that did that. So I guess my question would be is, if any of y'all would take the time to get with me and let me know how you're gonna handle that. I would really appreciate it as a citizen, and I thank you for your time, and best to all of y'all on the budget.
Thank you, Ms. Fowler, for your comments. Our, our final speaker on the request form tonight during the Visitor Citizens Forum is Mr. Ray Eklund. And Mr. Eklund, while you're coming forward, your subject, you have three listed, and I need to be sure, ethics is one, attorney opinion was the second, and your writing on that third one looks like mine.
They're all related. It's all, it's all there. I'll just take the ethics, and we'll go with that. How's that?
Okay.
I won't pull a jack on you too much.
Okay. You have six minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name's Ray Eklund. I live at 2532 Oakwood Terrace. As we looked at these ethics problems and the, and the ethics rules that the council was to follow, I was struck with a similarity in the law that covers federal and postal employees, okay? And, and what that law is covering, and I'm, I'll let the attorney spend his time in the back, but it's called the Hatch Act that covered the federal and postal employees for fifty or sixty years, and that was designed to keep federal and postal employees from giving the color of authority to political parties, okay? For example, the postmaster or in a local town could not go to the Democratic Party meeting and hold an office or even speak because he was the postmaster of the little town, okay? And that was designed to keep some of that problem out that we're now faced with, with these charges which we've, we've put behind us. I would like to ask the council to consider, and I believe the mayor addressed this sometime back, maybe last year, about updating the ethics policy and getting a little deeper into some of these things. I, I think this is a perfectly good place to tighten up the language, to say, you know, if you're a sitting council member, you can knock doors and visit, but we don't want to see your name on anything. And it, it's simply a matter of typing a few words onto the ethics policy, which will keep these kinds of conflicts down from our community. The, the mayor and I have discussed this issue. I wrote a, a piece about it. I, I don't believe that it was the proper thing to do, but I think that's, is simple enough to fix, and that is to tighten up the ethics policy in that area, okay? I didn't like endorsements when Mayor Fowler did it ten, twelve years ago, okay? I actually wrote letters to the editor at that time, so, you know, those are things I think we can avoid and will help bind our town together if we can keep those kind of politics behind us. I was curious, Mr. Lewis spoke about the elderly and it wandered off into the senior tax freeze, and I won't get too deep into that, but he did mention that he spoke to all of you about that fact. Now, I would like to speak to all of y'all about a lot of things. I want to talk to you about the drainage issue down here, and I want to talk to you about these other issues, okay? And when I brought that to the city attorney, I wanted to have a little bus tour. I was gonna put you all on a bus and take you around town and show you items of interest, and, and I'd show you what I know, and, and maybe some of these other folks would show you what they know, and, and we'd all learn more about the city. Totally couldn't do that. It was a violation of open meetings. Can't, can't do that. So I just want to make sure that as you visit with private citizens, right, about public policy, that we don't get too far gone on that, especially regarding the senior tax freeze, right? And I'll spend my six minutes next meeting, and we'll talk about that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Eklund, and thank all of you who signed up for the Visitor Citizens Forum. This is a very important part of our meeting. We do need open government. We need for citizens to be able to bring forth matters that are of interest or of concern to them, that may not be on the agenda, and thank you four for speaking tonight. We come now to the boards and commissions. Item number eleven is resignations. Do we have any resignations to be brought forth at this time? Okay, there are none. We move now to appointments and reappointments. Councilmember Hutchinson, I believe you have some recommendations to, to, to bring forth.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to bring forward three nominations for ratification, two specific boards. Mr. Scott Allen for the Planning and Zoning Board or Commission in place five, served four years on the commission, well-qualified to continue serving on the board. I'd like to nominate Birdie Blocker on the beautification, for the beautification board, place five, served a number of years on the beautification, on, on beautification committee, and I'd like to have her nominated, and also would like to have Mr. Paul Strong nominated in place five for the Parks and Recreation Board. He has had eight years on the Parks and Recreation Board and have served well for this city. Those are my recommendations for ratification. I make a motion that we approve those three.
You've heard the, the nominations by Councilmember Hutchinson. If you will, express your wishes regarding his request for ratification, and that carries by unanimous vote. Councilmember Sutton, I believe you have, first of all, let's talk about the Economic Development Corporation.
Right. Thank you, Mayor. I do have, we're required to replace the EDC appointees from the council this year, and there are four appointments, and I was tasked by you last meeting to determine those appointments, and I have done that, and I'd like to present them at this time, if I may.
Please do.
I'd like to appoint Bill Lanford, Dian, Councilman Bill Lanford, Councilman Diane Branson, Councilman, I mean, Mayor White, and myself to the EDC.
Okay, you have heard the recommendations or the nominations for the council member's side of the Economic Development Corporation. If you will, register your wishes regarding ratification of those individuals, and that passes by unanimous vote. And Councilmember Sutton, I believe I had asked you to bring forth, as the Mayor Pro Tem, recommendations to the council regarding liaisons to the zoning board of adjustment and to the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Thank you, Mayor, and I have done that. I would like to appoint as council liaison to the Planning and Zoning.
I make a motion that we approve those three.
You've heard the, the nominations by Councilmember Hutchinson. If you will, express your wishes regarding his request for ratification. And that carries by unanimous vote. Councilmember Sutton, I believe you have, first of all, let's talk about the Economic Development Corporation.
Right. Thank you, Mayor. I do have, we're required to replace the EDC appointees from the council this year, and there are four appointments, and I was tasked by you last meeting to determine those appointments, and I have done that, and I'd like to present them at this time, if I may.
Please do.
I'd like to appoint Bill Lanford, Councilman Bill Lanford, Councilman Diane Branson, Councilman, I mean, Mayor White, and myself to the EDC.
Okay, you have heard the recommendations or the nominations for the council member side of the Economic Development Corporation. If you will, register your wishes regarding ratification of those individuals, and that passes by unanimous vote. And Councilmember Sutton, I believe I had asked you to bring forth, as the Mayor Pro Tem, recommendations to the council regarding liaisons to the zoning board of adjustment and to the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Thank you, Mayor, and I have done that. I would like to appoint as council liaison to the Planning and Zoning, Kim Reese, Councilman Kim Reese, and I'd like to appoint as council liaison to the Zoning Board of Adjustment, Councilman Chris Holcomb.
Okay, you have heard Mayor Pro Tem Sutton's recommendations. Will you please express your wishes regarding his nominations for the liaisons to these two boards? Councilmember Reese, okay, good. Do we have any further appointments to be made tonight by the council? Okay, there being none. We have no council members who are absent. We move now to executive session as authorized by Section 551.071 and .072. Any action to be taken by the council will occur when we come back out in open session or at a later time in open session, but no votes will be taken while we're meeting an executive session. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for being here, and you're certainly welcome to stay till we come out of executive session, if you'd like.